All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've called this meeting to order. If you would, if you would stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. We'll follow that with an intercession by Chaplain Whitley and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, gracious God, we thank you for letting us live in this wonderful place. Please forgive us when we care more about credit than results and worry more about winning arguments and solving problems. Give us the wisdom and grace to work together for your people and for this community. We pray your holy name, amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. All right, thank you all for being here tonight. We will now go through the process of approval of the official agenda and consent agenda items. Do we have any changes on the bond?
Room number four, approval of board minutes. Room number number four, approving of board minutes and remove that from consent, please.
Okay.
Room number five of on the board business.
Yes, sir.
Remove number five from consent.
Number five, okay. Okay.
Those are the two I have.
Sir?
Those two.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, do we have any other changes to the consented agenda or to the agenda? Okay, seeing seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the consent items as as modified?
So moved.
A motion for all to remove, but I'm second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, allow me, and I will take this opportunity to read the consented items. Under management business, there's consideration of the approval of a resolution of establishing a redevelopment project area pursuant to section forty-nine dash thirty-five dash one at SEC of Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two annotated as amended and pursuant to section fifty-seven dash ninety-one dash one at SEC of the Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two annotated as amended for a redevelopment project area that should be known as the MTV Properties LLC Redevelopment Area. Under board business, number two is approval of entering into a professional services contract as approved by the city attorney with Golden Triangle Planning and Development District in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars for administrative services related to the Starkville Roundhouse Road Sewer Improvements Project. Item number three is consideration of approval of entering into a professional services contract as approved by the city attorney with Golden Triangle Planning and Development District in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for administrative services related to the Starkville Mill Street Reconstruction and Drainage Improvements Project. Number four is consideration of approval of Fair Housing Resolution and declare April as Fair Housing Month for the City of Starkville's Community Development Block Grant, which will install a gravity-fed sewer collection system within the Roundhouse Road area. Number six is consideration of approval of an affirmative marketing plan resolution for the Mill Street Reconstruction and Drainage Improvements Appalachian Regional Commission, A R C, project. Number seven, consideration of approval of a Code of Standards and Conduct Resolution for the Mill Street Reconstruction and Drainage Improvements Appalachian Regional Commission, A R C, project. Number eight is consideration of the approval of any of the aldermen and mayor to attend Mississippi Municipal League Summer Conference beginning June twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen, and ending June twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen, with advance payment for the conference reservation and accommodations with advanced travel. Vice Mayor Perkins will not be traveling. Under airport, we have a trust approval for the purchase of a John Deere five-one-zero-zero E utility tractor on state contract in the amount of fifty-two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Under planning, there is B, consideration of P P eighteen dash zero-three Final Plaid eighteen dash zero-five request for preliminary and final plaid approval for re-subdividing plus or minus point seven-three acre parcel into two lots at two oh one Oakmont Road in an R four zone with a parcel number one oh sixteen point zero zero point zero one nine point zero zero. Under finance administration, we have consideration of acceptance of the March financial statements. Number three is consideration of approval of reverse auction service agreement with Southern Procurement LLC from April one, twenty-eighteen to March twenty, twenty-twenty. Under the fire department, we have consideration to allow battalion chief Stuart Byrd to attend the Mississippi Partners Preparedness Summit Conference on May the seventh through the tenth in twenty-eighteen in Biloxi, Mississippi, with advanced travel at a cost not to exceed three hundred and fifty dollars. Under fire department number two is request permission to issue a commercial burn permit to Saunders Ramsey to burn clear debris associated with a construction project with this burn to occur at Clayborne at Adelaide Phase Two, property located on South Montgomery on approximately April the thirtieth of twenty-eighteen. Number three is request permission to accept the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant, H M E P, which would be used to purchase five multi-gas detectors in the amount of twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty cents, having a twenty percent match in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-three cents. Under human resources, we have request authorization to hire Benjamin Oswald as an entry-level police officer and Marvin Hughes as a certified police officer for the Starkville Police Department. Under parks, we have number one, request permission to accept a National Recreation and Parks Association, N R P A, Walmart Foundation Rural Communities Healthy Out of School Time Grant for the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars and approval for the mayor to sign the required memorandum of understanding between N R P A and the City of Starkville. Request permission to allow Gary Logan to attend training in Wichita, Kansas, required by the National Recreation and Parks Association, N R P A, Walmart Rural Communities Healthy Out of School Meal Grant Program with advanced travel not to exceed a thousand dollars and to be one hundred percent reimbursed to the city by the grant. Number three is request permission to allow Gary Logan to attend the Parks and Recreation Summit Conference, April twenty-three through twenty-five, twenty-eighteen, in Atlanta, Georgia, at no cost to the city. Under the police department, we have number one, consideration to allow dispatcher Erica Ratliff to attend the TACT course for dispatchers, May seventh through eleventh, twenty-eighteen, in the Forum, Mississippi, at a cost of five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Number two is consideration of allowing Corporal Scott Lomax to attend the police marksmanship course, which will be held May the seventh through the eleventh, twenty-eighteen, at the De Soto County Sheriff's Office at a total cost of eleven hundred and four dollars and ten cents. Number three is consideration to allow Corporal Tyler Davis, Officer David Fayer, Officer Antoine Golden, Officer Dante Thomas, and Officer Princeton Henderson to attend the Seventeenth Annual National Law Fit Challenge in Olive Branch, Mississippi, on June seventh through ninth, twenty-eighteen, with advanced travel not to exceed one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Number four is consideration to allow Sergeant Kenny Watkins to attend the Fourteenth Annual Mississippi Command College in Oxford, Mississippi, July the fifteenth through the twentieth, twenty-eighteen, with advanced travel not to exceed nine hundred and ninety dollars. Under the utilities department, we have number one, request authorization to declare non-functioning water meters as scrap and removed from the inventory and sell. Number two is request authorization to release old utility easements across the College View Project. And number three is request authorization to advertise for trailer-mounted vacuum excavator. And that concludes the consented items.
Thank you, ma'am. May I go back to number one on the utility? Mr. Kim?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea what kind of parts of these are just a scrap mill? Do we have an idea what kind of parts of these are just a scrap mill that we throw in the way?
These are old meters that we've accumulated and we pull out and they transition or we have a failure that accumulated and what this allows us to do is to dispose of them. They're brass at the bottom and so there's some value to them and we can put them out there on the on the sale, I think, to get some, something.
Thank you.
But that's what it is, it's old meters.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the bond?
No, ma'am.
Okay, eighteen. All right, with that, we will move to consideration of the minutes of the April third, twenty-eighteen meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of the City of Starkville. Do I have a motion?
I'll be recognized, Ms. Boo.
I'm sorry, Alderman, you want to be, let me hear a motion in a second, then I'm gonna give you, okay? And I think I heard a motion.
I'll move, ma'am.
Uh, Alderman Miller, I have a motion from Alderman, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman and Little. Okay, discussion, Alderman Vaughn.
On on this day that Ms. Dorothy Isaac made this comment that she asked the city to get more stores built in Rolling Hill neighborhood, I think she come back and corrected that, but we still put it in the print because ain't no way in the world you can put a store in Rolling Hill neighborhood. So I I think we should have scratched this and rephrased what she said because this is not what she said.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I had.
So I I just, you know, a common sense, I'll let you know that you can't put no store in Rolling Hill neighborhood.
Okay.
I mean, that 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 should have been scratched and should have been reworded the way she said it instead of like this.
Okay, well, we can we can certainly make that correction.
Thank you.
Miss, she's pulling, she's pulling up right now, let's give her just just a second to do that. Okay, um, let's see, under Ms. Isaac's comments.
Yes, ma'am, public appearance.
She noted her appreciation of, oh, what, her public appearance?
She was up on, she was up on public appearance that night.
Yes, okay, noted her appreciation of MSU basketball Starkville schools. She asked that the city get more stores built in the Rolling Hills neighborhood. Okay, I see what you're talking about, in the north part of, north part of the community.
That's what she was talking about.
We'll make that change.
We can make that, we can make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Is your motion to?
Do I need to add that condition?
If you would like to, yes.
Yeah, I'll move.
Final amendment?
Final amendment with that condition.
Okay, thank you. And the second remains? All right, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have a nay from Alderman Vaughn and a nay from Alderman Walfrid. So by vote of five to two, motion carries.
Mayor, um.
Vice Mayor?
Law, you read the corrected language on that. Tell me how it reads. On Dorothy Isaac, we spent a lot of time last meeting about that. It shouldn't been a problem, but what do you have, what is the language that you have it now?
Asked corrected, the sentence says Dorothy Isaac noted her appreciation of the MSU basketball Starkville schools. She asked that the city get more stores built in the north part of the city. That's asked corrected.
Yeah, that that sounds better, that's what she represented. So it's very important that we get these minutes correct before they get here. So thank you, Mayor, you have the floor.
Okay, but thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, um, next item is announcements and comments, and I'm going to take an opportunity to highlight things that we've got going on in Starkville this week, one of which is going to be the Clydesdales on Thursday. They're going to be out at Fire Station Park, which is going to be Fire Station One over there at Lampkin and Russell Street, and they are quite magnificent creatures. If you've never seen them, at the very least, you should come by, bring your children, because they are incredible, incredible animals, and they are just amazing the way that they keep them up. So it would be a fun thing for the kids to see. Um, and then, um, that's on Thursday at five o'clock, and then on Friday, we have the women's celebration, the women's, uh, MSU women's team celebration that will be coming to downtown at approximately four-thirty, and we're hoping to get people out to line line Main Street and celebrate with them their excellent showing for the past year, two years. Um, and then, of course, this weekend is the Cotton District Arts Festival and Superbowl Weekend, and I am working with Dr. Passant and Jennifer Prather to see if we can't do something similar for our state championship S H S girls as well, because they also had state championship where they where they won it outright, and we had done a proclamation recently for them, but that was for last year. And so in doing something for this year, we're researching what we can do, and hopefully we'll be announcing something here one day soon, get something fun for them, so. Um, and with that, I conclude my remarks. Do I have any remarks from the board?
I'd like to.
Alderman Vaughn? I'm sorry, I saw.
I'm glad you went back and corrected that, because I'm telling you, I'm very upset because the old girls didn't want a state championship two years in a row, and we haven't done anything for them, but we're gonna recognize Mississippi State, and how can we forget our own high school, a high school where you graduated from, I graduated from, and a lot of them didn't graduate from? I was very highly upset by that. How can we look over there? And the boys also won, they 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 came in second place in the state championship for the playoff, they came in, in runoff in the playoff.
We can do some of that at the same time.
So, you know, don't look over homegrown peoples where our high school at, please.
No, you're you're absolutely right, and I'll be honest with you, I was I was somewhat ignorant to it, because we had done a proclamation, if you remember, not too long ago, and I didn't realize that that proclamation was for last year, because I wasn't here last year. But yes, no, you're absolutely right, and we will, we will work on doing something.
I know you you tried to get the girls, they've been doing spring break, but I don't know, did we ever make another effort to bring the girls back up here?
I I did not, and we were gonna do something, we'll just see if we can't do something bigger.
Thank you.
All right, absolutely. Alderman Carver, I saw your.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Mr. Logan if he wanted to stand up and just tell the community about this grant and what it is, the Walmart grant, and then also, I was gonna tell you publicly that just being down there this time of year, that I think the fields are in better condition than I've seen in a few years, baseball, and got more to go. Come on up, just anything we can do to highlight the parking wreck system, so.
Sure. Um, the the grant that you've approved, thank you for that, by the way, for acceptance, is the N R P A Walmart Communities, Rural Communities, Out of School, Healthy Meals, uh, it's some combination of those words, but anyway, it's a it's a grant one hundred percent reimbursable, up to thirty-five thousand dollars, um, that will go towards a summer feeding program, and we're we're thankful that there there's already some groups in town that do some of that, so we're gonna be partnering to implement that. Um, the mechanics is something that we're still working on, and Chris and I have talked about to make sure the implementation is done correctly. Um, the other part of that is going to the travel, which was again approved to not on consent, to go to Wichita, Kansas, which will be a a day and a half in-person training about other communities that have done the same, we'll be able to share our story going forward, you know, in a year, a year's time, basically, we'll be able to look back on what we did this summer and reflect on it and see other, allow other communities to to see what we did, but we're obviously very excited this summer to do that Healthy Meals, uh, Summer Feeding Program, and and a lot of opportunity there that 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 should be a lot of fun, and thank you. I'll be sure to pass on the appreciation about the field conditions to the staff, so they've definitely worked hard. Thank you.
And the cleanup was good, this sun, this past Sunday, we did the cleanup, so, excellent. Thank you. Any further report of Alderman comments? All right, seeing none, we will move to citizen comments. Citizens may come up and have three minutes, if you would please identify yourself, um, any topic that you wish.
Good evening, my name is Abington Ward Seven. Do a little difference, uh, to the mayor and board, to the police department and the N A C P, our safety, uh, keeping us safe, uh, it's very, very important. Main Street, we have a few problems. Main Street, Red Courthouse in the signal light intersection, we have some cracks in the street, and a person with a cane like me, if you can't get stuck in the crack, let know, uh, you might bite the dust. Also, at Cadon Bank and Region Bank, there's another crossing where, uh, a lot of cracking, a person with a cane, but not can, can't get stuck in the crack, uh, you might bite the dust. The new Harbor Twelve, uh, we see a lot of people doing U-turns, and we'd like to know where are the places that you can do a U-turn safely without getting a ticket on the new stretch of Harbor Twelve. And, uh, self-defense, uh, beginning in time of year to where a lot of people, uh, a lot of things happen, and then they do things, and they say they're self-defense, so that that just concerns the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Do we have anyone else, citizens comments?
I would like to recognize the Starkville Mayor's Youth Council, y'all, please stand up and come forward.
Good evening, my name is Jason Robertson, and I'm the mayor of the Starkville Mayor's Youth Council. Just recently, we had the opportunity to meet with an amazing group of individuals at Jackson State University who spoke passionately about our city and local government. We were given many helpful ideas to bring back to our commu- community. The Starkville Mayor's Youth Council has worked extensively in our community outreach over the past several years. We are grateful to our mayor, Mayor Lance Brule, and each of our aldermen and all the women for having the vision and courage to support the Starkville Mayor's Youth Council. We thank each of you sincerely for your willingness to serve the citizens of Starkville in creating a path for leaders on tomorrow. I'm confident that you are, that with your continued support, we will achieve our community's goal. Again, on behalf of the Starkville Mayor's Youth Council, thank you for your unwavering support, Jason Robertson.
Thank you for coming forward, and thank you all. I hope you're all enjoying the experience. It certainly is a is an opportunity to learn about government and learn about a lot of things in our community, so thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Stevens, Ward Three, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Honorable Alderman. I'm here to speak about item nine F four on this evening's agenda, consideration to establish an EMS district ambulance service in the city limits. I have several concerns about the proposed action and believe the city should take additional steps before making a decision. First, I am concerned by the appearance that the city has already made the decision to award a contract for EMS response services to Pafford EMS. It is important that any private firm the city partners with is selected through a transparent and cooperative and competitive process to ensure taxpayers receive the best terms possible. Second, I'm concerned that the city's decision to establish ambulance service within the city limits will yield foreseeable and unintended consequences for existing county-wide EMS services. EMS services, like utilities, have cost structures that make them natural monopolies. In these cases, boosting competition does not necessarily lead to lower costs or increased quality, but instead can destabilize the marketplace. I fear a citywide EMS service could begin to cannibalize the revenue stream for O C H ambulances. This would harm our publicly-owned hospital while generating profits for a private firm. Third, I'm concerned that there has been insufficient engagement with O C H. According to the Starkville Dispatch, as of this weekend, Mayor Spruill had not yet successfully spoken with O C H CEO Richard Hilton about this issue, and I'd like to know what Mr. Hilton thinks about the proposal. Fourth, I'm concerned about the devil that's in the details. According to reporting by the Starkville Dispatch, Fire Chief Yarborough's, uh, Fire Chief Yarborough expects that some city firefighters will, quote, "may work both regular duties with the department and respond to medical calls with the new service," end quote. This possibility raises a host of questions. Who bears liability in cases where a city employee is engaged in work with a private partner? What if additional city firefighters are hired to work in coordination with the private partner and the private partner decides to exit the market? Finally, I'm concerned that the initial costs of the city may prove more significant than expected. According to Chief Yarborough's presentation, quote, "We have to provide a place to house the personnel vehicles and supplies of Pafford EMS," unquote. How confident is the city that these costs will be limited to fifteen thousand dollars? Would another private firm be willing to pay these costs to win the city's contract? To conclude, I believe the city should take additional steps before making a decision about establishing an EMS district in the city limits. In the end, a public-private partnership with Pafford EMS may indeed be the best course of action. However, I do not believe the city has provided the necessary evidence to make that conclusion at this time. Thank you. And if it pleases the board, I have copies of this, if you'd appreciate them.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Moore.
Thank y'all for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, it's kind of coincidental that it's Fair Housing Month, and I'm here to talk about fair housing. Um, approximately a year ago, it's brought to my attention by Lisa Nguyen, that was liaison Alderman to the Housing Authority. It's also brought to my attention by Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Perkins, that we really, as a municipality, have or field our obligation to people that are living in public housing. It's been since the late fifties, early sixties, since there's been any new public housing. So I took that on, my partner, law partner and I took that on as a goal, uh, to try to help the city of Starkville, and we, in conjunction with that, we've been working with Bo Bell, who is president of Starkville Housing Authority, Amy Bishop, who is the manager of Starkville Housing Authority, and we've been working with Chris Dobbs, who is a developer from Tuscaloosa. We came up with a strategy to get new housing in Starkville without it being a significant expense to the city of Starkville, and what we came up with was a program that we worked with the consultant for the Housing Authority. We brought in their consultant, we consulted with the HUD field officer in Jackson, Mississippi, in an approach to try to get housing that would not cost the city money. In that regards, the housing field officer was so excited about our project that they contacted the Fair Housing Authority in Atlanta, Georgia. They they flew their lead director from Atlanta to Jackson to come up and view our project. They said it was the best idea that they had ever heard in thirty years of do of doing housing projects. Now, what makes it unique is if you if you deal with housing projects and you liquidate those, the municipalities do not get to keep the funds, those go back to the federal government, you may or may not get it back, and if you do, it may be ten years, fifteen years. But we devised a plan that would allow us to do a trade. So what we're proposing and what we're under contract with the with the Starkville Housing Authority is, we're gonna build a seventy thousand square foot replica of Pecan Acres in an area that's been approved by the Fair Housing Administration out of Atlanta. We're gonna exchange that property, so there won't be an exchange of funds, so the federal government doesn't get involved. Otherwise, you can't get these projects done. We're gonna take Pecan Acres, we have commitments from motels, uh, we're dealing with several restaurants, we're headed to Las Vegas in May to the retail, to the retail project, uh, where they have companies come in from all across the country to meet with them to try to bring in a re, uh, entertainment center into that area. It is absolutely gonna be a win-win for the city. We're gonna take property that's not currently on the tax rolls.
Mr. Moore, I hate to interrupt you, three minutes are up. Mr. Vaughn? That's what I was, I was gonna say.
Yes, ma'am.
You asked a question and haven't continued, go ahead.
Continue.
Okay, so we're gonna take the Pecan Acres property, put approximately a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of infrastructure and development on it, it's gonna increase the funds that our schools will receive by approximately a half a million dollars a year. We're gonna receive sales tax, we're gonna receive property tax, we're gonna get the people that are living in public housing that's over seventy years old into new housing, and I call that fair housing. It's time that these citizens receive the opportunity to live in fair, adequate housing. And I want to commend Henry Vaughn, who's been very instrumental in helping us work on this. The property in Pecan Acres is in his ward, the property where we will locate the new project is in his ward, so there will be no dilution of voting rights that would require the Justice Department to be involved in it. Also, I want to thank Roy Perkins, Vice Mayor. This has been an extremely complicated process, we've been working on this close to a year, and the intricacies of the law have been very detailed and very complex, and he has helped us work through those matters. Uh, they both are on board with what we're trying to do, uh, we're really excited about it, it's gonna be the single largest dual project ever done in the city of Starkville. The funds that will be generated from the restaurant tax, the sales tax, the property tax, will be instrumental in helping pay for the park, the additional parks that we need, um, and I have an idea about that as well. I think the city should at least investigate the possibility of working with O C D A for the cornerstone park that's basically being unused. I mean, that's making a statement. If we go out and build a facility that makes a statement, that's what we're gonna have to do to compete with places like Oxford. We just can't keep adding on to what we've got. My kids played soccer over there when they were three and four years old, they're thirty-three years old now. So I would like the opportunity to see the city. So, I would like the opportunity to see the city proceed. The reason I'm bringing this to you now is that there's some publication requirements and it's going to be in the paper shortly when you do this type of project and I didn't want anybody on the board not to be aware of it. We haven't brought it until this point in time because we run under a confidentiality agreement with our clients. And also, a lot of the documentation that was done really belongs to our client and was proprietary in nature, so they own it, the processes. But, we've also been contacted. The government's interested in us showing them how to do this on other areas. So, this will be the first time this type of project has been done in the United States in this manner. I just thought the board would like to know that.
Appreciate that. Mr. Vaughn, I see your hand.
I, I, I like the method and I like all the hard work that they did put in this because I look at it, we always talk about the quality of life and this would change the whole quality of life for that neighborhood over there and for the peoples in Starkville because we keep on talking about the quality of life but we keep dragging the quality of life to one side of town. I guess that's something the dark eyes always fuss about. It's something that's always been on my mind because I always talk to you about it, Mayor Spruill. But, I think this would make a big difference in the city of Starkville and change that, change that perspective on that side of town. All that will become commercial property on that side of town. Over there in that area, we're running out of commercial area on twelve anyway. So, I think it's a good idea. I think it's a great, a great method, a great, really a great project and which is not called this, no expense to the city. That's the main thing. The city, it's no expense to the city.
Okay. Well, I don't, I, I confess, I'm a little slow on the uptake here, so I'm not quite clear in what it is that you're, you're doing. So, I would like us to have a work session or something.
I just wanted to commend Mr. Moore for bringing this project forward because this is huge. Anytime that you can open up additional properties on Highway Twelve available for retail development is big because there's a lack of it. And I think anybody on community development staff will concur that there are always folks looking for good locations on twelve and that's going to be a prime location freeing that up for commercial use.
And there's more property there than people realize.
It's a win-win for those, those folks that live there. They'll get new quality housing, energy efficient and just, just better all the way around. And it's a win for us and the schools as far as revenue generating.
And our clients are dealt, are familiar with retail strategists and so, you know, that's going to be a win-win too because that's who y'all's consultant is. And...
How many acres is it there?
It's about, it's about fourteen acres. That's how long that, and there's about four on the other side of Wood Street. And, and I want to say this about my client. When he came to see me, I had no idea what he was here for and he said he came to do a project, but he said, he said, "I came here to make a statement." You know, and that's, that's what we're here to do. Not just to do a project, we're here to make a statement. And then we want to put a mark that's going to be there and people will see it and know it and realize that this is something that's going to pay benefits to not only the schools but the city for years to come.
Excellent. Oliver Walker, I saw your hand.
Mr. Moore, thank you, I think, and thank you to the folks for the Housing Authority. I think there is no doubt that there's plenty of room for improvement in trying to improve public housing in the, in the city of Starkville. So, I think this is a, I think this is a potentially a good thing. But, like you said, the devil's in the details. I, I would certainly like to see, as opposed to this being a citizen comment, I would like to have seen this on the, on the agenda, so we have some things in the packet so we can actually look and see what this big idea is because right now, it sounds really, really good. And there's a saying that if something's maybe too good to, you know, if it sounds too good to be true, maybe it is. And so, the que, I think I have more questions. I'm hopefully very confident about it, but one of the things that, you know, if you're talking about, we're not displacing, but we're moving people inside the same ward for voters and that's great, but is it going to require any type of rezoning? Where are these people going to be in terms of the ward? What, there's a lot of other details that right now, we just don't know the answer to that because we're not familiar with the project, so we haven't seen it.
Right, and like I said, the reason I'm here tonight is because there's going to be publications in the paper notifying tenants and I didn't want y'all to see that and not be prepared to know what we're doing. Right now, we're in the planning stage. They have a firm out of Nashville that's doing design layout and plans for both locations. The project has to go back to fair housing. They have to actually see the layout, approve, of course, the handicap portions of the development. So, it's a, there's a process that has to go through. So, we'll be back. It's just not, I just wanted to give you some information, so when you're asked about it, you're not completely in the dark.
Would you be ready to come back maybe at the next board meeting to give a full-blown presentation or is that still premature?
Fair housing needs to evaluate our site plan first and then, once we do that, we'll be ready to come back.
And I would also say that, I would encourage, as, you know, not only does fair housing have to approve the, the site plan, but the Community Development Department's also going to have to approve the site plan. And I would just make sure that, that, you know, that some, because I could see this plan out. Well, fair housing approved it, so the city of Starkville needs to approve what they, what they have and we need to just make sure that everybody's in, in the same book and on the same page with that.
I understand the process. But, what kind of timeline is, are you talking about?
We're hoping that they have to file an application with fair housing in Atlanta. It has to be approved and then that will be the final phase through the fair housing. I will say this, when they came to evaluate the site, we actually got preliminary approval from the federal government out of Atlanta in five days. So, yeah, they were very excited about what we were trying to do for the community. So, we're completely familiar with, with all the rules that are required to go through. So, that's not, that's not an issue. We understand what that involves.
One of, one of the things that I've become aware of in, in regards to our public housing is that there is limited availability for one bedrooms and other things like that. You've said that y'all are looking at a replication of what's at Pecan Acres. Are you going to be expanding the number of units that are available? You're not creating, you're not creating any new housing?
Well, the square footage is going to be approximately the same, but believe it or not, there are actually some five-bedroom units over there that really are not being used.
Probably not.
So, the Housing Authority and the fair housing will determine the, you know, proportion of units that will be necessary. Well, it won't be our decision. It will be based on need.
But, do you see any expansion of the number of units available?
Well, if we go from five one-bedroom units versus a five-bedroom unit, yeah, that would be more units. They're going to determine what the market and demand is.
Okay. And I, I'm sure you're not quite ready to tell us where you're talking about relocating them to. For a lot of those residents in that area, transportation is, is an issue. Will, will they have access to public transportation in the new location?
That was one of the requirements.
Okay. And have y'all met with any of the tenants yet, next on your to-do list?
That's the next, and that's why we're up here. The publication for the tenants is next, but they've started being made aware of it.
Okay. Will y'all help them with moving when the time comes?
Here's what we're doing. The, the way this is going to take place, the units will be, will be built and then they will be, then they will move into the new units. Nobody's going to be displaced for any period of time. I don't think there's been any discussion.
I, I just know how, how much I would hate to have to move.
I would research that. That would be affiliated to the housing authority after.
Okay.
And we have looked at that.
Okay, good.
And they have, and the Housing Authority has started their due diligence as well as far as environmental reports, surveys and that sort of thing. So, it's, it's actually started moving faster than we anticipated, but being a government project, we didn't expect them to respond so quickly. But, anyway.
Oliver Carver, I saw your hand.
Oh, I guess the only thing I had a question with was the timing, but I understand from a confidentiality agreement standpoint that this is the way that it had to come to public, but...
It is, it's the only way we could have done it.
I'm, I'm extremely pleased with what I've heard so far. And I think these are big numbers. It's going to be one of the largest projects you'll ever see in the city of Starkville at one time. This is probably a, probably a textbook example of a public-private partnership. Anytime you get this many entities involved, and I know we deal with industrial park and we're in the business of confidentiality agreements, but I understand, I get it. And I think this is, at the end of the day, this is going to be, I mean, it's a win-win all the way around. I do want to have a work session on it. I think that at this point, that's what's fixing to come.
We have to stay doing that as soon as we get our site plans.
I understand. Appreciate what you and your law firms have done and then the Starkville Housing Authority, what y'all do. And I was going to ask that same question. I understand there's going to be no displacement. Anytime you've got this kind of situation, I think this is once in a lifetime, to be honest. So, that was going to be, you know, this would be if somebody wants to, volunteer Starkville, wants to get involved, anybody that wanted to help. There's, there's tons of outreach programs out there that could help, but this is a, I mean, it is a win-win. So, thank you for what you've done. Okay? Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, any further questions?
Madam Mayor, may I recognize?
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Moore, Attorney Moore rather, you're an officer of the court, attorney. Just want to thank you for bringing this idea to the mayor, the vice mayor and the board at this time. I find it very important that you're bringing here tonight because this is Fair Housing Month. We need to put our mouth where the wording of these resolutions are contained, they're in. It's supposed to, for being just shown. I mean, that's what Fair Housing Month is. We don't have to wait to know work session to be there. I mean, this is the premier time that this body assembles. There's nothing that make it more official by discussing it at a work session. Given my twenty-five years almost on this board, Mr. Attorney, that this is the good time. That's what citizens' comments all about. For anybody who wants to come here and say whatever they want to say and how they want to say it, that's what democracy is all about. Now, with all that being said, it appears to me that a lot of thought has gone into this, into this idea. A lot of thought has gone into the planning and the organization. I see that you have, obviously and just apparently, an entourage of, of those assisting you here and I see your, your associate with you and obviously some representative from the Housing Authority and that reveals and dictates to me that, that they are in support of this plan. The purpose of the fair housing law is to ensure that there's housing afforded to all. And the only way we're going to know about it, we got to hear about it. So, when you come, you know, we need to welcome this idea like we do any other idea. There are a lot of things that come up here to this board in the three-minute comments that some of us don't necessarily agree with, but it get pushed through without it going through a work session. So, I'm, I'm interested in hearing it. You know, when I come to these meetings, you know, I'm not in a hurry to leave. So, this is an important subject matter. The packet is filled with resolutions and proclamations about the fair housing month. So, if, if it's that important, let's recognize it. And, you know, if it's not important, why put it on the agenda? So, this is all about fair, F-A-I-R, housing. This is something that we need to take our time, not push back against and just hear what the proponent has to say. You know, there are a lot of people in this city who needs fair housing. There are a lot of people in this city who cannot otherwise afford housing like some of us can. Everybody cannot afford a five thousand square feet house or a four thousand square feet house. They have to get what they can through a plan like this. This plan may be not appealing to some and appealing to others. And I represent a lot of people in this city and have represented people throughout my almost twenty-five years here that find this type of presentation very important. I wish we still had that TV camera so more of my constituents can tune in and hear what's going on. We are limiting access to democracy. You know, again, I always say, you know, that, I always feel it too, Mr. Moore, that a lot of times, people wish that I shut up, but as long as I'm here, I'm going to talk. That's what I'm elected to do. You know, I don't get in no hurry. I mean, I'm just as comfortable as I want to be. I mean, I was sent here by the taxpayers from Ward Six, I'm going to continue to represent them, but I'm going to give the best of service at all times. If anybody's in a hurry, need to go while I'm talking, there's the door back there. So, but, you know, we need to hear more about this and, and, you know, I want you to continue to bring it in an open meeting. I'm not going to be at a work session. I find this is the meeting where I need to hear things. I'm not interested in hearing that in a work session. Maybe the majority will. If they want you to go there, that's up to you, but I want to hear it at this meeting. So, I think this is a good idea. And I'm also excited, Mr. Moore, about the fact that this is not going to be at any cost to the city. This is, this, this is what gets me, you know. I want to hear about fair housing opposed to distributing whiskey at a, at a city park. That's what I want to hear about. You know, I want, I want to hear about this. This what interests this, me. This about economic development and growth. This is about helping those people who may not be able to have a place. So, you know, if there's some kind of way and you got all this kind of approval from the federal government and the, I saw Mr. Bell, he's been on the, on this housing board for a long time, very established, a member of our community, a very viable voice in our community. I know he's on the, on the housing board along with some other prominent people and, and, you know, we need to hear more, more about this and this is a good idea. And also about your idea about the cornerstone park. You know, we need to explore all these things. We don't need to push any of these things aside just because of you not on the public appearance. That does not make, make this matter unimportant. So, I want you to continue to explore this and, and I'm, I'm very satisfied that you brought it. You know, I'd rather have you to bring it here than not bring it at all. You know, because the board does have a policy that is sometime enforces and sometime it doesn't about the number of people who can be on public appearances. It's just all about who it is and, and what you got to say. You know, and, you know, that's just how that goes. And you say, "This is the best idea in thirty years." I'm all for it. You know, anytime we can save the taxpayer some money, this is an excellent idea. And you talk about that this would be a seventy thousand square feet replica of Pecan Acres. I mean, why is this unimportant? A seventy thousand square feet replica of Pecan Acres and it doesn't cost the city any money? I mean, this is music to the ears. To me, it is. So, I mean, regardless of who bring it, I mean, you know, I mean, regardless who the messenger is, I mean, I'm excited about it. I mean, I'm excited about hearing, bringing in this level of, of information whether it can require zoning or rezoning. You know, we, the board, you know, it does what it wants to do. I mean, it depends who, who presents it. You know, we get a lot of zoning matters up here, you know. Sometimes the board have one public hearing, have two sometime. It just depend who you are. That's just straight talk. I mean, there, you know, some may not like me to say that, it's just straight talk. Sometimes the board follow ordinances, sometimes it does not. Just like the last meeting, Mr. Moore. At the last meeting, the board approved for the distribution and allowed the distribution of whiskey, or beer rather, from the fire station without having an ordinance on the books. So, I'd rather hear about this growth in economic development. So, I want you to know before you leave this evening that your vice mayor, your senior member of this board appreciate you. I want you as a citizen, as an attorney, as a taxpayer, as a citizen, know that, you know, we, well, I'm going to say I, I welcome this kind of idea. I'm not saying nobody else does not. And I'm sure there'll be a lot of comments to try to follow this, you know, but we, we won't worry about that. Okay? So, but, but I appreciate you, you continue to bring these things to us. This is an excellent idea. We'll continue to move forward. You know, we can, a seventy thousand square feet replica, the best idea in thirty years, no cost to the city. So, continue to explore it. If you go to a work session, I want you to get on this agenda because I won't be at the work session. You know, unless the mayor's out of town, I'll, I'll get, go there and preside then, but, you know, but if, you know, but continue to bring it to this, to this session. So, I, I, these are the type of things that I like to hear at these meetings. These type of things I like to support. And you bring this entourage of staff, let's see if we can get on the public appearance. Ask Ms. Harden to, whether you want to come back, get ahead of time because these spaces go real quick since there's some question about these things. But, tonight is good. So, we appreciate you and your, Mr. Bell, I mean, that's, he's, he's my constituent out there. I mean, he's, he's my constituent, a strong businessman in this community, a, a strong businessman. Mr. Miles, excellent lawyer there and all your other, the, the members from the Housing Authority, we appreciate them. We appreciate them for being in the city. We just have to take the time. And I'm going to say this on the close, just like when I go to church on Sunday, I don't rush to, I don't rush to the service. If I got to rush to the service, I might as well stay at home because I'm going to miss the message if I don't rush to the service. So, that's why I take my time when I come here. You know, I, I don't, because I, I just have to take my time and do the business because when I go to church, if I'm in a hurry, I may miss the message. Because they were worried that the preacher preaches, in my opinion, most are important normally, you know. So, but, but that's where we are, Mr. Moore, but we will thank you and, and I didn't mean to just, I want to make sure that you feel welcome, you're from the vice mayor. We appreciate you and, and your, your idea. Thank you. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And let me be really clear, there is no one up here that I heard say anything against the plan. I think it's... the plan. I think it sounds like a wonderful opportunity for us. I just would like to hear more because I'm not real clear on, on the project. So, and I will look forward to you being ready to come forward so that we can have more details. I think that's a great idea. I've seen two, Alderman Little first, I mean, sorry, Alderman Miller first, and then Alderman Carver.
Mayor, thank you. I just figured, you know, since everybody else spoke, I might as well speak.
Please do.
So, I think that's the way that works, right?
Mr. Moore may get tired of standing up there.
Yeah, I know. He didn't know he was getting all this. Well, no, I'd just like to say, in the vice mayor's comments, I don't know if you've ever been to one of the vice mayor's work sessions that he's led, tight 13 minutes, we were in and we were out, so he runs a tight work session.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, thank you.
And, and, but, but no doubt, I, I think this is, I'm, I'm interested to see, obviously. I look forward to that. If everything you're saying is, is, is in the foreseeable future, I think it could be a real positive. And I know you know, a lot of people know that capital inequality, housing inequality is a real thing and starvel, and if we can get there, I look forward to working with this entity to get there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Carver, I saw your hand.
I'm going to concur with the vice mayor on this one. The magnitude of this, I'd just rather save the discussion for a public meeting. So, thank you. That'd be my request.
All right. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, any more citizen comments? Any more citizen comments? All right, not seeing any. We will close it for citizen comments, and we will move into public appearances. And Judge Faber, you'd like to come forward? And Ms. Shalonda?
Mayor Moore, thank you again for allowing Ms. Sykes and myself to appear. Before you give our annual report, Mr. Moore is at the prosecutor's conference, or she would be here as well. Again, I want to thank you every year that I stand up here, all of you, for giving us this facility. It truly is amazing, it truly makes our jobs easier, and I can't thank you enough. And I'm going to thank you every year that I stand up here. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the citizens. Secondly, I want to, I want to thank you for appointing Ms. Sykes to this position. We lost Mr. Rook, been here 20 years, he's my right hand for nine years. But we've had a seamless transition. She's done a phenomenal job, and we haven't missed a step. So thank you for listening to our recommendations and putting her in this position. And you'll see when she does a report, it'll be just like Mr. Rook up here doing it. But I've been giving her a hard time all week getting her ready. But anyway, I know y'all are busy, but municipal court, there's really not, there's been no really big developments in municipal court. The case count, as you saw in the package, has gone down about 1,400 cases. That's attributable to about 1,300 less traffic tickets this year. We've had a larger, a large increase in the number of ordinance cases that I've heard this year. Ms. Sykes is going to break everything down for you, but I believe she, we came up with a figure of about 32 that we, that I've actually have been filed and heard and disposed of this year. So I know that's something that Alderman Little has always asked me in the past, and so 32 cases this year. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sykes because she is the one who knows these numbers inside and out. Vice Mayor, if you have a question, I'll be glad to answer it, but...
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Vice Mayor?
Yeah. Your Honor, you know, you and I always are preparing when we go to court. So, I mean, I've read your report already, and it appears to me, as an officer of the court and as an attorney, that your report is self-explanatory, it speaks for itself. And I think y'all have done a great job in just looking at this as an officer of the court, and, I mean, I don't, and I, and certainly, if you want your staff to just read the report to us, but I think y'all have done a great job, but I want to cut you short, I mean, I just think, it looks really wonderful to me. Is there anything you want to explain?
We're more than happy to let you tell us that you've seen the report, you don't have any questions, and we'll let you go into your other business.
But it just, I mean, you know, you, we just talk as lawyers, but you know, you, it looks real good, Judge.
But we want to make ourselves available if there's any questions that you might have, so.
Well, let me say, I would like to see the report because I think it goes to the public ability to see the report as well, so. And you spent time preparing it, so how about we, we acknowledge that and let you go ahead and make your report?
And I've been giving her a hard time all week, so I do want her to at least give something.
Absolutely.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Sykes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Aldermen. We stand before you, like Judge said, to present our 2017 annual presentation. I'll be going through several slides. They are self-explanatory. If you have any questions, you know, just feel free to ask us at the end. How traffic citations, we have a total of 6,698, and as you can see, the previous years, they are down. DUI arrests, we have a total of 259. And if I'm going too fast, please stop me. The misdemeanors, a total of 1,057. Felonies, 185. Total new cases, 7,940. And on these next slides, they're broken down in categories, and to the right of it is percentages. Traffic citations, total of 6,698. You see that no insurance, 1,778. The no seat belts, child restraint, 1,258. And our other category, they can vary, varies from tent violations, improper equipment, expired tags, and so on. This is just some examples. We have speeding category, 1,341. The no driver's license, suspended driver's license, 531. Running a red light, running a stop sign, 360. And the DUIs, 259.
And the traffic citations are moving violations, right? As opposed to parking tickets, right?
Yes, ma'am. They are. All moving violations.
I have a question. I have a question as well. That's 6,698 total citations, but, but it could be fewer stops than that because one person might have speeding, a no insurance, a no seat belt, all, all in that same stop?
That's correct, yes, ma'am. That's correct. On this next slide, we have our misdemeanors, a total of 1,057. Our highest category is going to be our violation of probations and contempt. We have the alcohol-related offenses, 78. Drug-related, 113, our other category. And that other category, like the judge stated earlier, that's some of our city ordinance violations filed up under that other category. We have disturbing the peace, disorderly conduct, total of 64. Simple assault, simple assault domestic violence, 67. And our theft, 164. To the right is broken down into percentages. And we have our felonies, 185. We have the theft, burglary, and robbery. We have our other. Other can range from murder, manslaughter, rape. We have our white-collar crimes. We have drug-related offenses, 28. Aggravated assault, 22. And our felony DUI, 7. And that concludes our 2017 annual presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Alderman, vote.
Chief, I'd just like to commend you because you play a big part of this, and Judge Faber, and Ms. Sykes, and y'all department. I commend you all because it's a very great job because these numbers, since I've been on this board, these numbers is steadily coming down and down. And like I say, this is going on my, through our time, so I've been seeing a tremendous change in y'all, and it got to be something good coming from all of you, and I appreciate it very much.
Mayor, one last thing, if I may be recognized.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, Your Honor, I'll be sure to tell my esteemed colleague, the honorable seated prosecutor, that the vice mayor says she, as I understand, is also doing an exceptional job. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? All right, thank you, guys. We appreciate you coming out. Appreciate everything you do. Thank you. All right, we have another public appearance. Mr. Turner, you have, you were trying to make up for the time that you didn't speak to us for the last couple of meetings. And you have, you have 10 minutes.
Our, greetings to the mayor and board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
And to Chief and to our NAACP president. Citizens are very worried. We have a sitting mayor that seems to constantly get harassed and aggravated, such that it is, it's taking a toll on the citizens. Fire, they leave the mayor alone and let her run the city. It's very stabby that, she's doing what she can, but constant aggravation, stuff like that, it's hard. And from your own outside looking in, you can say, but then if you were in position that you would more be treated the way that you, you, you had to be careful. Also, my baby brother would have been 53-years-old, the 29th of this month. So pretty much for his son, his daughter, his wife, his mom, his sister, and his brother. For some strange reason, about a month ago, I was walking home and someone called me Willie T. I wrote, "That's my baby brother's name." Don't know whether they playing games or not, but cannot play with people like that. And except for this, a lot of people nowadays, shooting and stuff, they figure that, well, I had to protect myself. We need to try work together and live together. And that's, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Alderman Sistro. The, when, when Mr. Turner was speaking earlier, one of his concerns was about U-turns and some confusion about where people can make U-turns on Highway 12. That's a pretty straightforward answer. I think Chief Nichols can get that one off of the list of concerns for us quickly.
Greetings, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board. Of course, you know, it's a project of Mississippi Department of Transportation and not ours. Wherever there's a sign, there's usually a sign that's going to say, "No U-turns." So if it's got a sign there, of course, you can. But from my understanding, at most of the intersection, you can make a U-turn. That's the only way you're going to frequent some businesses unless you go and drive through somebody's parking lot.
Is it Mississippi law that unless it's prohibited, you can make a U-turn? Is that correct?
Unless it's in signs.
So anywhere it says, it doesn't say, "No U-turn," you can make a U-turn?
That's right.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mrs. Turner. Mr. Turner, is that clear? Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's our first public hearing on amending the city alcohol ordinance relating to open containers for special events. And what I will do is offer an opportunity for and against. So we will start first with a, with a for, and this change is to, essentially is to allow during a special event, which will be sectioned off based on the footprint that has been requested as a part of the special event, for example, the Cotton District Arts Festival, or Pumpkin Palooza, or some other normal event that we have, that you can have an open container in those, in those events. So this is an opportunity for us to make sure that our ordinance matches what we, what it is we're doing and have been doing for a number of years. So anyone who would like to speak for the ordinance now is an opportunity for you to do that. Anyone wishing to speak for? Anyone wishing to speak for? Okay, I see no one wishing to speak for. Anyone wishing to speak against the ordinance?
My name is Allen Waskin. It's time that we get one understanding, mean what we say and say what we mean. The officers have a hard enough time trying to keep peace, and then if you get alcohol in you, then you get bad. And that's very stressful on the officers. And then if the officers do what they can, then the people get mad saying the officer mistreated them. We got a good reputation. If we don't put a stopping point to something, we going to give ourselves a bad reputation, and we don't need that. The officers do the best they can, the NAACP, a lot of our kind do the best they can to try to keep peace, so that that gives concern that when people sober, sober, they act better. But then if, if they get intoxicated, their peace will...
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak against? Ms. Isaac?
Mm-hmm. I'm for it. Good evening.
Good evening.
I would just like to say that I'm against this, and the reason I'm against this, you got special activities going on, you got children in there. We're going to exclude the children from going to, to the special activity. We got children in there. Open containers don't frustrate the children. How old must we be to drink? Well, we're sitting here with an open container saying, "Well, babe, you just look at me and how I do this," and that's what's going to happen. Let's have a little conversation. We have all kind of alcohol, all kind of other stuff going on in the city, but let's not do this to our children. All right, we're going to exclude them because there might be a lawsuit. There just may be a lawsuit if anything happen. I'm saying open containers should not be around our children. And then really, Mississippi State, some of them are not old enough. If you look at it, they're not old enough. Open containers would climb down horses, but I hope they don't get in sight. I hope they don't about throw down a few and let them go around. I'd just like to say I'm against, totally against.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Isaac. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak against the ordinance, ordinance change? All right, seeing no one else, I'll close it as a public hearing, discussion among the board. Anything? Okay? All right, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is under Board Business. It's the update on the Roundhouse Road wastewater status.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As I've said before, with federal money comes federal rules, and y'all have gotten a good taste of it tonight. But anyway, to provide you a brief overview of what's going on with the Roundhouse Road Sewer Project, which is your HUD-funded Community Development Block grant, which came from the Mississippi Development Authority based upon a competitive application process. We have completed the environmental review process. It ended April the 14th, 2018, and with that, MDA has sent you an environmental clearance. What that means is no one has objected to your project. There were some concerns about what could have potentially been endangered species, but we've proven that that is not an issue. So now you can enter into contracts with professional services. That's why you had some administration contracts tonight. We've also approved your engineer for this project following the procurement process required by the grant. So your engineer has estimated that it will take 60 days to complete the design, plans, specifications, and receive DEQ approval. MDA is giving you grant money. They want to ensure that everything has the approval of the regulatory agency. In this case, it would be DEQ. So we have to receive that, and it is a written special condition in your grant agreement. There is a procurement process that we have to follow because once again, federal funds are involved in this project. We'll advertise once, excuse me, twice in a local paper, wait a minimum of 15 working days, and we also at that time... And we also, at that time, solicit to minority and female-owned businesses by certified receipt-return mail and contracting the Mississippi Contract Procurement Center. We will open those bids. A bid tab sheet will be prepared and will be presented to you at a public meeting. It's gonna take at least five to six weeks to complete. The, uh, contract will be awarded to the lowest and best bidder. It'll take that contractor about a month to obtain his bonds and for us to conduct a pre-construction conference, which is also a requirement of the grant. A contractor will then mobilize, move on site, for a construction period of anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty working days. That is sort of on the outside, and I know that it sounds excessive, but the, the reality of it is, you know, you can only lay so many feet of pipe within a day. There will be an emphasis placed on connecting the Roundhouse Road residents first. So what we'll do is we'll start from where the sewer service ends on the north end of town, work our way up to Roundhouse Road, connect them, and then proceed forward north. So hopefully after the first of next year, we'll be able to close this house out so that you can turn around and apply for funds through the CDBG program the next year.
And you can only apply for one, one at a time? Or you don't have one working at a time?
You can only have one open public facilities project. Now, there are two categories under the CDBG program as it exists now, and that is public facilities, which is Roundhouse Road. It, those funds are distributed on an annual basis using a competitive application process, which applications this year will be due the week of May fourteenth through the eighteenth. So, you know, in a little less than a month, we will be submitting applications again. Unfortunately, you can't apply for that pot of money. However, there exists the economic development category, and we can apply for those all day long. You can have multiple projects within one year, as long as you have a project that meets the guidelines of the program.
Athletic facilities potentially fall into that category of economic development?
As long as the...
What was the question?
I was asking whether or not some athletic facilities, joint facilities, and things like that that could generate revenue.
Economic development projects are identified as those that create jobs. At least fifty-one percent of the people benefiting from the project have to be of low to moderate income. So therefore, at least fifty-one percent of the jobs being created have to be made available to persons of low to moderate income, and there has to be a private investment. So the funds can only be used for publicly-owned infrastructure, water, sewer, drainage, bridges, roads, publicly-owned buildings, as long as they do not deal with the day-to-day operation of government.
Okay, so and the, it doesn't matter how many jobs, is it a dollar tied to jobs?
Yes, the, the state has a goal, and it, and it varies from year to year. However, we can always ask for a waiver.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, anything else? Alderman Vaughn?
Do we ever check back from time to time to see that we have this money that he'll mark to go to this, that it stays in the right place?
Yes, or are you referring to the grants?
Yes, ma'am.
The Community Development Block Grant and the Appalachian Regional Commission Grant? Yes, sir. Those funds are available. They can only be drawn down on an as-needed basis. You know, it would be wonderful if they said, "See, we're Starville, we're giving you a six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. Have fun, spend it. We think, we, we trust that you're gonna spend it correctly, and you're gonna let us know everything is A-OK when it's over." Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. They, um, they require invoices to be submitted with, uh, paperwork that they give us, and therefore, that's why that admin contract is in there. So I can take care of that for you. Because remember, I always say, "I am too young to retire, but too old to be marketable." So, uh, we don't need to go to the House. But yes, sir, your funds are still there on both projects, okay?
And not only do you track those funds as part of our annual audit, we, um, all of our grants are reviewed for proper compliance.
That is correct. Anytime you receive over seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, you fall under the Single Lotted Act, which, uh, yes, MDA looks at that very closely. In fact, if, if it's not in, there is a finding, and you are not eligible for grant funds. So that's why your, your city clerk works hard to get that in, okay?
You will stay, stay for a minute, because our next item on the agenda that Alderman Vaughn pulled off the agenda, I think, is something that you may be able to answer any questions. Alderman Vaughn, do you have...
Just let us explain it a little bit.
Okay. Um, under the approval of Minority and Women-owned Business Resolution, would you provide a little explanation of that, please?
Sure. The, um, Mississippi Development Authority not only administers the Community Development Block Grant, but they also administer, or service the basic agency for the Appalachian Regional Commission now. This is something that's not always done. But they have chosen to run the ARC program, which you have to redo Mill Street, similar to the CDBG program. And HUD requires that we set goals, we being the governmental entity, set goals for minority and female-owned businesses. So they have requested, and you can change this, that you set a goal of ten percent participation for minority-owned businesses and five percent participation by women-owned businesses. This is a goal. There is no penalty, penalty if it's not met. However, anytime we have procurement, whether it's for professional service or construction, we solicit MBE, WBE, by certified receipt-return mail. We contact the Mississippi Contract Procurement Center. And HUD and MDA require that we track this and submit annual reports to, well, not even annual, semi-annual reports to them. So that's, it's a goal that has been suggested by MDA that you adopt. And they're following suit on ARC. So that's, that's what it is.
Okay.
Did that answer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, well, let me get a motion on this particular item. This is the consideration...
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Walker, and a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Ms. Benson.
You're quite welcome, thank you.
All right, next item up, Alderman Miller, this one is yours. Discussion, consideration of the Board Administrative Budget Procedures.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, I, all I wanted to do tonight, and the reason I brought this to the table, was just to simply discuss, um, and, uh, make sure we were all on the same page. I figured this was a good meeting to talk about the budget timeline for this year and the, what that's going to look like. Uh, it was in the packet, the timeline, uh, and so it kinda answered my question about when, um, and, and if the budget chair wants to jump in at all on any of these, she's more than welcome to. I, I would just like to say that, um, you know, I'd like to see something on paper from the department heads, um, and in talking with the city clerk, that will be included with the worksheet, worksheet that y'all complete. It's my expectation, uh, in terms of looking at the budget, that, uh, as we move into this, uh, calendar of the budget, uh, that either individually, or in a work session, or whatever setting it might be, uh, I'd just like to have a conversation with you about what the budget looked like this year and, and what your goals and, and what you'd like to accomplish, uh, next year are, and, and what I can do as a board member to, uh, achieve those goals. So, um, I just wanted to have the discussion tonight and relay that, um, relay that, that I have that expectation. So if, if the budget chairman has anything to add to that, she's more than welcome to.
I, just a couple of brief comments. Last year, um, we came in, into this process at the, sort of the eleventh hour, and had to approve a budget shortly after we, we took office. Uh, this year, I do expect us to be a little more, um, mindful about it and have more information available. One of the early things that will happen is people will get their, uh, departmental worksheets. We will provide some of those fixed cost, um, numbers, labor, that sort of thing. We will have a form to request information in terms of things that, um, you need, things that you want. We'd want you to prioritize those. We will also have, um, early on, when we're giving those out to the department heads, we will have a, a summary of where we are year-to-date with our, with our budget, and perhaps some really rough projections of, um, increases we might see next year on the same, um, book of business that we have this year. We will, um, clearly not have enough money for everything, and so it's gonna take some compilation of departmental requests, some, um, adjustments for things that we have committed to, continuing the salary increases that we've feathered in this year. We'll have a full year of that that we'll need to fund next year, for instance. Um, and, and, and that will, um, have to be put together in a comprehensive fashion so that not only are you talking with individual department heads, but you're looking at it at, at that, um, citywide level in terms of what we can possibly do. But, but I do think that we can do all that. I think we can, um, stay on track and have the public hearings that we need to have, and approve a budget at the end of August, maybe the first meeting in September. No, no need to wait until the very end, so.
We had consideration. Was there anything in particular you just wanna, do you wanna formally adopt this one?
We can, and I'll make that motion to adopt the calendar.
Okay.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion from Alderman Miller, and a second from Alderman Sistrock, and, uh, Alderman Carver, I saw your hand.
I just wanna make this comment to the department heads while we're here. I always got a lot of respect for y'all because, um, I'm gonna try to put this in the, in the nicest way. Sometimes department heads ask for too little, and I know it's a tough, I know it's tough, because you've all got these sheets of things that you need, and I understand that. But I respect a department head that gets up there and tells you, uh, first of all, from a priority standpoint, these are, "I've gotta have this, this, and this," and I understand that. And then sometimes, uh, I always appreciate and respect the department heads that ask for too much. I just be honest with you, 'cause you can't have it all, and so we've gotta look at that. We've got, you know, from a legal standpoint and other situations, uh, to know what we got. But sometimes I think, and I try to encourage department heads, they've got it, and they just ask for one or two things, 'cause they know they can get them. So in this case, uh, shoot for the stars, you know, see where we land, and I know it's impossible. I know it is, but what we do is we plan the second, third, fourth year a lot of times. So, uh, you know, we just know we gotta knock out this year, but I appreciate every, I know it's tough. I know it is, but thank you for what y'all do.
All right, sounds like wish lists all around. All right, Alderman Miller, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that actually I, I don't necessarily disagree with Alderman Carver. In fact, that's really the point I'm trying to make, is I wanna hear from you. So, uh, even if the answer is no, uh, from us, uh, you know, I, I, I still need to know what you need to run your department and, and provide good city services to the city of Starville, because, look, um, I campaigned on this, and I still say it to people all the time, I wanna get the little things right in Starville. And, and in terms of getting the little things right in Starville, that all is with y'all's departments, the day-to-day. When people turn their water on in the morning, they see government. And so I wanna make sure that all that operates the way that it's supposed to. If, if we're, if we're scared to put that foot forward, or, or we just simply ignore it, guess what we're gonna do in Starville? We're just gonna maintain the status quo. And I don't wanna maintain the status quo in Starville. I wanna each year work towards, you know, having the best departments and giving you the tools that you need to accomplish your goals. So, um, I, I look forward to the budget process and having those conversations with y'all.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn, I see your hand.
Do all the department heads have a copy of this?
Uh, well, I feel sure that they do.
They do have a copy of this, all of them?
It's in, it's in our, um, it's in our package. It's in our package, yes. And so, yes, they certainly have, certainly have access to it, and we'll make sure that they, that they have it first thing tomorrow morning.
If y'all, if y'all don't agree with this now, don't be scared. The department is, if y'all not agreeable with this, don't y'all be scared.
I, I feel sure, that's, that's a, a schedule that's been around for a while. I'm sure that they'll, that they will, uh, be able to manage that. We, we're at the six-month, we're at the six-month mark, so I think we're, we're in good shape.
We have been having regular, um, quarterly meetings with the department heads, so we've had the opportunity to, um, see how they're performing against the budget that we have right now. And I, I can tell from the comments I'm hearing from them when we're doing those reviews, that they are, are already thinking about the things that they need. And, and they, um, like, they have, they have lists, they have needs, they have wants, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is under planning. It's consideration of the...
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker, and a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrock. All right, discussion. This is the, uh, the plan to, uh, honor and have a celebration for the MSU women's basketball team. So, any other discussion? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That my vote of four, five to two, the motion carries. All right, and we have a claim stock it up next.
So moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker, and a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Miller. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, well, a vote of five to two, the motion carries. All right, next item up is, uh, consideration of establishing an EMS district and, uh, ambulance servants in the city limits. And obviously, there is, there is, uh, some significant interest. Chief, would you like to make your presentation?
Good afternoon, board.
Good afternoon, chief. Thank you, afternoon.
I started here, three years ago, when I got hired, I was in the process of trying to figure out the best way to serve the city. So up until this point, everything I have done, everything the city has done, everything the department has done, has been toward that goal, to make sure that we have the best services for the city. So that's why I'm here today. I saw a need, so I went out and started looking at something we can do to make it better. So that's why I'm here today. Number one, I've been asked this question the last four or five days, it's just Friday of the season, number of phone calls, number of text messages about this issue. Number one, the reason that I'm raising this board is, number one, to save lives. That's it. Everything we've done to this point, uh, exit the new trucks, uh, new personnel, manpower, new spec, anything we ask is always the same reason to save lives. If we can get there faster, we can save lives, so that's why I'm here today. When we arrive on the scene, we are very limited in what we can do. A lot of people might have, uh, not know that we, our EMT bases, we all have basic training, we have some here in Mexico, they actually function as EMT bases when we're on the scene. So when you get to the scene, sometime when they're for a while, it takes, you may have, just if you're a family member, we may be there for ten minutes or eleven, get them to family. They all stay with us, because we're not doing it anyway, but we're very limited in what we can do until the ambulance arrive. So looking at all that, one thing I want to do, I felt if we had ambulances throughout the city, then we could see quicker, we have a better opportunity to save a lot. If we had one bus station, uh, station at night, we had to have everybody located there to, to go down South Montgomery to go to Babylon Road, it would take a while to get there. But if we had guns spread out of the station throughout the city, then we have an opportunity to get there a lot quicker. So that's why this, this was done. This was a lot of stuff I wanted to buy, lifesaving, lifesaving services to handle around. I heard somebody say yesterday that every minute counts. No, when we're dealing with lives every second. So we have somebody not breathing, it's not a minute, it's a second. It makes a big difference, so that's why I'm here. I can go with it, I, I can, I'm gonna highlight some of it, if you want me to stop, and then go into our, glad to stop and answer your questions. I'm going to, I'd be glad to stop and answer your questions. Some of the strengths of this, if we actually got a chance to do this, the department of the city will be rapid emergency response time. Free as training, the firefighter training, right now we don't even do that. We give some training, but nothing is free. No experience in the city. And I said that, said we don't have to pay for ambulance, we don't have to pay for three ambulances, we don't have to pay for any personnel. When I talk about experience, that's what I'm talking about. We would have to do some renovations to the stations, minor renovations to station one, station four, station five. Pretty much station chaos.
What kind of money are you talking when you say minor?
I'm talking less than $10,000 or $15,000, just depending on.
Total? Do you have a female officer right now, firefighter?
No, not now.
Didn't we hire a female firefighter?
She retired.
She had.
So I was just, that was my question, wherever she'd been at. So you've got no female personnel that spend the night at all right now, right?
If we do have female firefighters in the future, we have to take care of it.
Is it 15 tops?
15. I think if you ask.
I'm sorry.
My personnel are going to work.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor.
Vice mayor.
I didn't hear the response to the question about the female firefighter. What was your response?
No, she's no longer employed. She had a mental condition, so she's no longer employed.
Okay.
I was questioning whether or not the provider, the ambulance service could, we'd be renovating that to accommodate their personnel. It's something that we might could negotiate with them, with whoever's looking to partner with us. It would be, it would be, you know.
We can look at.
It would be bringing them into a market that they're not in currently versus us incurring that expense. Are you?
Okay, thank you. Chief, go ahead.
Some of the opportunities would be provide job opportunities for the community. Right now, since I've been here for 20, almost 24 years, every time we have to hire, we have to go through the city. This would give opportunity for people outside of this fire department to be employed. The city doesn't have to pay for it. So I think that's a great idea. Provide advanced life support within 10 minutes. 10 minutes here is a long time. That's about the national area. That's a pretty good time to be on scene, having a patient treated. Ambulance in each district, we talked about ALS versus BLS. We have basic life support right now. Best life support we need is we have paramedics on scene who can provide medication, heart monitors, things that we can't do right now.
Is that, is that, is that really critical to have ALS? I'm going to stop you as we go on. Those are questions I've got about a list of things. ALS versus BLS, is that something that you've been, and does that help your fire ratings at all? Or is that something that?
It's not even helping the fire ratings, but we're going to save a life, so.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, we have inability to transport patients at our current system. We can't transfer from the station. Can't transfer in our vehicles right now. Funding, $1.5 million was the cost to get four new ambulances, new personnel. It's not including personnel. Lack of resource, of course, we have the funds, we have, some of the threats, some merger competitors. Somebody else could come in and do the same thing. I'm not sure what the vote is. That's, that's a risk. A risk of no backup ambulance service, negative experience, which I have experienced the last few days. The current ambulance service, which we, I honestly don't have an issue with. I noticed it come up the last couple of days with OCA. I think OCA does a great job. We actually working with him with OCA right now. This was brought up to him, he had time to talk with me, he's the city. So that's the whole thing that I heard a lot of different comments the last couple of days on that. So kind of covered this before. EMS district, we covered entire city, everything within the city limits. And you can see we have our stations here located, our stations one, two, three, four, and five. Station five right here, we have one ambulance there that will cover the bypass. That's a critical part of the city right now, bypass. We have a lot of accidents on the bypass. Station two is here. We have station four right here, which is important because we have South Montgomery. We have a lot of medical calls on South Montgomery, a lot of growing on South, a lot of older residents on South Montgomery. So station three, we wouldn't have ambulance there, and then we have one right here, station one, which covers Mississippi State and cover pretty much downtown economy. So that's kind of the plan just takes place. Incident calls in 2014, we had about 740 medical calls. Fast forward to 2017, 1,127 calls. So medical calls are going up. We have 80 community, 10 community, so the calls are going up. A lot of calls are slipped, tripped, balled. We have people with difficult breathing. To begin with, my time to tell us about who we're responding.
Chief, on those medical calls, I understand you're taking the big trucks out on each one.
Yes, we're taking a lot.
And if we move in the direction with the ambulances, are you going to send the ambulance? Ambulance will be going out and steering, lull the trucks?
We, and some calls, we would send just to ambulance. There are some calls that we have to send both because if we have a, say a cardiac emergency, it's going to take more than two people to be able to get there. So you still have to send this one there. We have a 10-50 hour accident, you still have to send one of them personally. We'll be responsible for execution, if possible, get them out of the car, get them out of the gym, and then give it to ambulance. So there's, there's some time in the ambulance, in the fire truck, to both of us.
You have any idea as far as number of times to quantify, you know, what type of calls that you've been getting over, you know, that you can say were still, you know, the redundancy, that you're still going to be sending out the trucks with the ambulance, any idea on that? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just curious.
You mean what type of calls do you have?
Well, you just, you just said that, you know, cardiac arrest and 10-50s you're going to be sending out.
We have a criteria, we're sending, sending the trucks out on those where. So I think that's a kind of criteria that we send out right now.
But you think you would cut that number down by half or more?
I think so, because at the end of the day, our trucks, they're not designed to do what they're doing right now. So there's another opportunity, the rescue truck, sending out, instead of sending the trucks out along with the ambulance, to also save some gas and save some time with the trucks, wearing them in the truck. Some of the initial concerns are, the board will go through these, I can answer any questions. We have how the public, the public concept of being cooperating with emergency management system in our city. Say there'll be housing out of departments. Day-to-day operations, we don't see any conflicts. I don't think there'll be any conflicts. The ones who will be employed from whatever company we choose, they will work directly with us. So I don't think it'll be an issue with that. More likely, the people that will be working will be people that value you know. How communication between the two agents will be coordinated. We spoke with Octavale County now, and I think that'll be the issue. I think we have pretty seamless information, we have to get everything out to the town and matter. How the system will be continued monitoring, sharing clients. I will be issuing a paperwork, issuing a report to keep them, and how much, how much time to actually take them to the scene. If that goes over, then we'll come back and revisit that, just depending on what company we choose. Physical timeline was July 1st. I know that seemed to be quick, but trying to get it in before high school start back, before college start back. There will be some time in between when you will have issued, the first month probably will be difficult for this type of situation. Give people in, give people learn the streets, give people, get the ambulance situated, get the station taken there. So July the 1st, and that way everything continues to be up before football season start, before high school start back, before we can stay back again. With EMS, can periods of overload, there's this call line. Sure. I think that's, even with three or four ambulance, you're going to see that. Even with 10 ambulance, you're going to see that. How would we deal with that? We would revert back to using our trucks and using rescue truck to respond to calls. Some of the initial steps will be to draft, to warrant approval, EMS district resolution to adopt official response boundaries within the proposed coverage, which you see will be the city limits. Submit the approval resolution to the Mississippi Department to help initiate the negotiation with Patford EMS.
Chief. We've got EMS district resolution, I believe, from City Attorney about 11:00 AM. Is that something that's time-sensitive as far as, is it statutory? Or is there something as far as, you know, any time lines on those?
No, sir.
I was just curious.
Try to approve a contract with this. Establish EMS integrated response system. Establish the district EMS response to unit housing supply areas. Afford a fire department liaison, coordinate fire department EMS, develop training requirements, and establish related communications with Patford EMS. Establish recompense, start a time to take over EMS coverage for district boundaries. Issue a press release. Continue to coordinate with the training, fire department EMS personnel. Ensure all licenses have been secured and ready for operations. And I'd like to speak, I know, turning down to say that. The time, the time it would take about 30 to 45 days to get an EMS district established. We can move forward to get that answered, too, pretty yet. We've just got that table there. So about, they say between 30 to 45 days is about the time to get an EMS district established.
And is the EMS district absolutely necessary to this operation?
It's going to be necessary for two reasons. Number one is to, well, that's to be trained in-house.
Okay.
Which we talked about in the slide, couple slides, if they have to go in-house training. And also to ensure that we have our boundaries set. This is not for if they will go in.
Okay, okay.
If, if, if the board acts on just the district force resolution, that's, we're not partnering with anybody in any sort of contract or agreement.
No.
Our development instrument, fire station policy, treaty guide, fire department personnel, that will be stationed together, question doctor EMS handbook for Patford. Documents submit uniform size of this fire personnel. Coordinated by fire department personnel with EMS resupply process. Contact the Mississippi Department to help notify the city's attention to submit a emergency medical, I'm sorry, I just flipped my head, service operator bond. Notify current EMS providers, start up and advise all future calls to be established. EMS district cannot be told by Patford EMS. Notify the current EMS provider, start up and advise future calls. Request daily and monthly response data to email to the fire chief, EMS liaison. And what we scheduled quarterly means, yearly means to make sure everything's been up to where we anticipate. Some of the fuel costs, last year for the engine, another about $5,500. You can see the maintenance, some of it's due to age, the other one's pretty much due to age. But that truck is not designed to be driven every day, all day long, back and forth from medical call. What we currently doing is another two in engine four, so. Costs to build personnel, that's, we provide a place to have personnel, this is cost, possible renovations to station one. Places to store reserve vehicles, rescue trailers. We have a lot of vehicles at our station right now. We provide a place to put the. EMS liaison, the deputy chief, at some point we should look at that. Rapid vehicles, some of the benefit, rapid EMS response time. Four new ambulances, provide a job opportunity for the community. Provide advanced life support within eight to 10 minutes. Spirit workforce with community familiarity. Pre-training fire department. Save money on training, EMT training, what exactly being right there? That's why the thing I talked about, establishing an EMS district. Once we get the EMS district established, we could then, at that point, teach EMT classes in the house. Currently, we go to EMCC to get them to the program. Sometime our guys, the bureau, takes over a year to get them to the program. It's a lot of rate take to get them in. This will cut that out, we can move in-house. And save us probably around $15,000 or $18,000 a year just to teach in-house. Generate the revenue for EMT courses. We could offer this course to deployments outside the car, come in, take the course here, reduce rates, everything within EMCC. Possible savings on fuel, repairs, maintenance, recruiting, retention. This will be a great way to recruit EMT bases already trained. I think it helps with retention, because you can offer a set of part-time job for those who need to go and make more money somewhere else. For this now, fire station five, which I put a question by this in, Lord, I'm bringing it brief. This is some process I'm checking out right now, so I don't have a definite answer on that. But in the process of getting that taken care of, I'm not looking at that now. Summary, establish EMS district, sign a contract with EMS provider, develop training. Establish communication protocols, set up a heart, start up time and date. Press release, announce the EMS takeover to current provider, reviewing available with the new system. Now, I was, even when I started with, why should we impetus in the city's program to save lives? When we arrive on the scene, we're limited in what we can do. This would allow us, firefighter companies to provide lifesaving services, the town amendment. And finally, provide great service for our citizens.
Okay, thank you, chief. All right, questions? Alderman Miller.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Chief, thank you for the presentation. I'll give the disclaimer that before I start asking questions, that I'm on your side, okay? So I think it's a great idea and really good initiative. And I think you're right in that this will provide a gap in services that the city of Starville isn't necessarily providing. And I like the first bullet point, to save lives. So I'm on board with you about that. But I do think there are some important questions. The gentleman that spoke during the public comments, Dr. Andrew Stevens, I think you hit the nail on the head with some of your questions. Those are really good questions. And I'm going to ask you some of those tonight. So the first being, of course, this is a, oh, what's the word I'm looking for? It's a service being provided, a professional service, excuse me, it's a professional service. And so obviously, we don't have to seek requests for proposals or we don't have to request bids for this service. But I would like to know, in your PowerPoint, and what I've seen in the packet, the information given to me, is why this company, why Patford? And without having any other discussion with any other companies, why should the board of Alderman, if we're going to do this, choose this company?
As a fire chief, we, I did with other fire chiefs across the state. One of the things I do is do my background and talk with the other chief. What's working, what's not. Talk with Dick's word, see what's working, what's not. Talk to several companies. When I talked to three fire chiefs, this name, that became on three different times. They love the service that they offer. They love the reach that is given to the department for this city. One of the things, a couple of things, why I chose this company, and why I think this would be the best one. They will provide friendly ambulances for our city, number one. Hiring, if we actually have an opportunity to hire people, we actually get a chance to sit in and help pick and choose the ones that want to be hired, that will be working out department without personnel. They provide all medical supplies. That's one thing that we, we ought to do. Also resupply, so all medical supplies for all apparatus, our vehicles. Free training, medical direction. And then it also would give us opportunity to get some paramedics. We have a person that want to be paramedic, it's a cost.
Right.
Offer scholarships, and go to school to be paramedic. They vary the professional services, not the good things I heard about the company. And we're talking about basic life support, basic life services versus advance. Like I said, right now, we don't even do that. We know that they came, we don't have them yet. So that's why this company.
Yeah, and I think those are all really great things. Again, I like the initiative. I like the ideas. My curiosity as a board member and serving the public is that I'd be interested in what other companies were offering in similar services, if they're offering better services. If they're offering better services, you know, better incentives for the city to, to be there. The other question is that, within that, have we had a discussion with OCH? And, and my thought in asking the next part of this question is, why not simply keep it in the county? And have a discussion with OCH? And, and have OCH, and in agreement with them, provide their ambulance service at these fire stations? With the same concept that we're talking about tonight? Could you maybe elaborate on that, or?
I did, I spoke with Michael Hunt, Mr. Ambulance Service Director, a couple times. We spoke, one day last week, we spoke today.
Okay.
One of the things that came up, they, they were looking at this concept, they actually have four ambulances in the city.
Right.
That's fine. But I think the issue is, the ambulance still be responding to the county. So they were back to square one, be back to not having ambulances maybe when we need them in the city.
Okay. So, so in a, in a sense, you, it goes back to, you, you would make the argument that goes back to time, right? It's back to save lives part, in a sense. And that they would be also responsible for the county as well. Was there, I'll yield if I need to.
Alman, sister, I got a question, but don't stop with your question.
Not a question so much as I wanted to, I wanted to add to what Chief Yarborough was, was saying. There are three ambulances, I believe, at the hospital. Two of which are staffed at the moment, and an unstaffed ambulance is pretty useless. So, so they have two ambulances, they're available for medical calls, and they also do a good number of transport calls. So when they are moving a patient from the hospital to a nursing home, or from the hospital to another hospital. And so frequently, you might only have one ambulance available. And, and the cost, if, if they were gonna put additional ambulances at our fire station, the cost of the ambulances and the staffing would, would be significant. The county currently subsidizes the ambulance service at the, at the hospital. They assess a tax mileage for that. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure that if there were any requests for additional funds, that would also come along with a tax increase to run that through OCH. I think it's a great idea, it would, it would be wonderful, I just think it's cost prohibitive, probably.
So you're saying, you're saying, Alderman, sister, that you think it would be a strain on OCH?
I think it very much would be, I think it very much would be.
So you don't, you don't think that it would, it would be a cost benefit to OCH?
I, I, I don't, I, I don't see that it would significantly, to provide the additional ambulances out at the, out at the fire stations. I, I just, I, I, I don't think it would be feasible financially.
Let me, let me get in this, because I met with Mr. Hilton today, and we talked about this very thing, and discussed their, they actually are running three crews, twenty-four seven, he said, currently. And so they, he said that his board had looked at this in the past and would possibly entertain as an opportunity to offer the city out, what Patrick is talking about, what Patfords are doing. But in large part, they have never done that and are not so inclined at this point. So he said, you know, 'cause I told him what we were looking at was a one-year, essentially a one-year trial contract to see how it goes. And, and if during that time it looked like it worked for us, and there was, there were no issues, that the county might then be interested in doing something similar. But they are not anywhere near at the point of ramping up to do that.
Right.
And, and it is a loss for them. Ambulance service has always been a loss, which is why it must be subsidized from OCH's standpoint, and which is why the county gives them two-hundred-and-twenty thousand a year in order to make this service work. So just, just to give you the most current discussion that I had with Mr. Hilton this morning about that. But his board is, is obviously going to be the ones who, who make those, those decisions to how they move forward with, with ambulance service. Alman Carver, did I see you?
I got, I got the floor there.
You do? That's absolutely correct, you do, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So I, I'll wrap up my comments, then we can carry on. But I, I, I wanted to, and I appreciate that input, and, but it's a good question to ask, I certainly want to ask it. So, and, and I'd like to know too, and I got thinking about this when I was looking through everything. You know, obviously, basic business sense is that if I'm gonna come into a market, or come into a community, I, I, I think the big sell on this is gonna be, well, it's no cost to the city of Starville. Meaning as a government entity, there is no cost to the city of Starville, essentially. And, and so my question is though, somebody's gotta make money somehow, you know, and, and, and within the business model of this. And so my concern is, will this create more of, I realize the citizens won't be taxed through the city of Starville to provide this service, right? But will they be taxed in a different way in having this third-party private company come in and provide this service? Meaning, is it gonna cost them more to, when they get picked up by an ambulance, to, to have this service? Do you know how all that works and, and what the cost might be related with that?
Can I bring up?
Sure.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
ID yourself.
I'm Mike Seymour, I'm the chief medical officer for Patford Ambulance Services.
What, did you give me the answer?
What, could you, could you explain to me, with you bringing your service in, or anybody bringing their service in? But obviously, I know you can only speak to your company. What the, the sell is, is not gonna be any cost to the city of Starville long-term, essentially. So obviously, you've, you've got your basic business model, you've gotta have revenue to do what you do, okay? 'Cause you're a for-profit institution. So my question is, the sell is, well, you're not gonna have to tax your citizens to do it. But it, but what I wanna know is, are we taxing them in a different way by providing a private entity coming in and saying, right now they get OCH? Which I realize the save lives and the time part in there, I disclaim them. But say it costs five hundred dollars to pick them up from, from OCH, but y'all are charging a thousand dollars to get them picked up. We just talked about inequalities, you know, we spent the first part of this meeting, you know, healthcare inequality is a real thing too. So I wanted to ask that question and, and see what your thoughts are about that.
So I can't speak to anybody else's rates, I'll tell you that our rates are, I'll, you know, one of the things that we are is quite transparent. So I'll tell you that our rates in general for an ALS call, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you some generalities, because I'd have to get billing up here to tell you that. But I think about eleven hundred dollars for an ALS call, and about eight hundred dollars for a basic transfer type. Now, that may sound like a lot, but there, there are also, we're in, we're in network with Booth Ross and Booth Shield. Where if you transfer someone on Medicare or Medicaid, that rate's set. It doesn't matter if we wanna charge them twenty thousand dollars, the rate's set by the government, and that's what we charge for. So, and, and that would be any company that would come in here couldn't do that.
Right.
So I, I, I think our, I don't, and I don't know everybody else's rates, but I think our rates are some of the most competitive in the southeast part of the United States.
Okay.
Can I, can I say something, just, I mean?
Sure, it, well, it depends on what you're, yeah, it depends, let, let me finish.
Okay, yes, sir, yes, sir.
So my next question is, and I just wanna hear from the city attorney, in, in what ways would the city potentially be liable? And could you provide me with a scenario in which we might be liable?
Well, that's why I advise that the contract not go forward tonight, because we need to further delineate the separation of responsibilities between the city and Patford. But to answer your question specifically, liability could be incurred if there was a blurring in the lines between the city and the independent contractor, such as the city trying to control the work, or having the right to control the work. If those lines get blurry, liability could be a possibility. But as long as those lines are separate, that Patford's an independent contractor, and even though they're at the fire station, the job duties and responsibilities are totally separate, and Starville does not control or have the right to control the work, or the details of the work, or the manner of the work, or the timing of the work, then it's really hard for liability to blow back against the city.
Okay, thank you. All right, chief, how would dispatching work?
This is great, it's, it's the same way we do it right now.
Okay, so it would, it would come out all through, through, okay. The only other comment I had, I had written down, well, I got two other comments, is, is one, I agree with the comment made earlier by Alderman Little, in that, and this goes into, I'd like to hear from other companies. And, and that's nothing against Patford. But, but, you know, I'd like to get some RFPs for some of other companies to at least see where, what they're offering, and, and, you know, what others can offer as well. Because the other thing is, is if I'm coming into a community, you know, Alderman Little brings, brings up a good point, in that we're providing a market to whatever company comes in, and we're providing revenue for whatever company that comes in. So I'd like to have some conversation there about putting the burden on the city to make additions and accommodations to those facilities, when I feel like, other than the save lives part, that we're providing more for that entity than, in a sense, than they are for us. Does that make sense? So it's something to discuss, and I, I'd like for us to have that discussion. And I also think the gentleman, Dr. Stevens, brings up a good point in considering the long-term implications of privatizing this, this service, and, and, and what that might mean for the city moving forward. Because it brings up a good point, that that can provide a monopoly in, in this county, or in this district. And also too, that this board, although we might enter into contractual services with a private entity, and depending on the years that they run, in a few years from now, there might be seven new people sitting up here, and, and they're not bound to this contract. So they might decide to go in a different direction. And so I just want us to make sure that we approach this with a lot of caution, that we do it right. Again, chief, great job, great initiative. I will say, I, I'm personally not comfortable taking any action tonight, before I see some other RFPs. If we do take action tonight, it'll be a nay from me. I certainly want you to meet your goals, and, and, and like I said, I'm on your side. I wanna see you complete your goals and, and get there, I just wanna work out the kinks, and also from, from the advice from the city attorney, and that, that we need to look at that contract regardless, and talk about what our liabilities are, and what we can do, move forward. So that's all that I have.
Did you, did you wanna ask a question, or did you have something you wanna say?
I just wanted to make a, just, I, I, and I, I certainly agree, and I think that's a prudent thing for the city to do, is ask other people. But I just wanted to let you know some degree of comfort, 'cause this is kind of a, a strange entity, that we've done this previously in the city of Brandon, and the city of Pearl, Mississippi, that's how this started, they created. So there's kind of a, and it may help the attorney too, there's kind of some precedence there about how this was established, and, and kind of what was done in those regards. Just to kind of save everybody a little bit of time, you might wanna talk with those guys as well. This, it was a, it was a private fire department, and we were housed in the fire departments, we did all of that. So just to give you some, someone to maybe talk to and ask about this, this hybrid system that we bring up, 'cause it is a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Alman Little, I see your hand.
I know you guys are in the business to make money, in the private sector, you're not gonna go off and venture like this and invest, what do you say, one-point-four million with Uangl, to the personnel, and, I'm sure you've done your homework on that. And I, and I have the opinion that the government, the government doesn't run anything as well as the private sector. There's very few things that I would say, the government runs better. That being said, has there ever been a city or entity that you ventured out into that where this failed? Twelve months down the road, since we went this route, and you guys said, mm, this is a lose situation for us, we're gonna pack up and leave? Has that happened anywhere in the show?
I'm not, I'm not aware, I was sitting, sitting here, you know, Patford is a fifty-plus-year-old company. We have one hundred, a little more than one hundred ambulances on the road right now in four states, we're just under one thousand employees, and we operate three air medical helicopters and two fixed-wing aircraft. And I'm not aware of any place that we have removed ourself after going in, into there. Are you, I can't think of any other, I, I just don't remember. I, I certainly don't think of any that I can come off the top of my head. Thank you.
All right, I saw Alman Vaughn, and then I saw Alman Carver.
Chief, I just want to thank you so much for, you know, bringing this to the board, because when I first read this, the first thing came to my mind, every second, every minute counts. And you get a lot of naked complaints about our ambulance service that we have here, and that's what opened my heart up so quick. That's what opened my heart, because I know, every second, every minute, this mean a whole lot with a life. And you bought me with that. And with that, I will support this tonight, even though somebody might not, but my heart is in this, because life matters. Life matters. And you lose a second, you lose a lot of time.
Thank you, Alman, Alman Carver.
First of all, thank you again, chief, and Mr., I'm gonna leave you, I asked you to stay. These are some notes, and then these are some questions mixed in. This is things constituents have asked me, paramedics have asked me, firemen have asked me. And so I, first is a note, is the cost-saving and training is gonna cover any minor renovation that you gotta start. I'm in favor of this, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. When I asked the mayor and chief a few months ago to start this process, I was more in favor of the city retaining the services. And then where this went, I think from a cost-saving standpoint, the liability shifting to y'all, from a financial standpoint. And so I am in, in favor of that. Possible annexation, within this board term, I could see annexation possibly happen. How does that affect, so right now, we provide medic, fire calls to MSU. Is that, do you foresee a station somewhere on campus? Or how does that, how does that all play into this? Possibly?
I think we still operate from station one to station four, still able to take care of calls.
Okay, so you're not seeing some, sometimes ambulance services put nothing more than a trailer somewhere, this air conditioning, and they, and they post out on some edge of a town. But, so right now, you think four will work for the MSU campus?
I think.
Okay. I had questions on the, this is kind of mutual aid agreement kind of stuff, but the medical flight services that we've got now on Airport Road, and then you say you've got, you've got helicopter services. Do you see any, I'm not asking more or less if you, you're not shipping to that company, and if we chose y'all, and I'm gonna get to that in a minute. But, um, does this affect any kind of contractual thing that you've got with Flight here in, in town?
Neither, no.
Okay. I have concerns with a, a company being named tonight in a, in a PowerPoint, to be honest. Oftentimes, and I think he, and I think I know the gentleman you talked to, but it speaks volumes of a company even be listed this, and to be up here at this point. But I'm in favor of lowest and best bid process, so, you know, we'll see that. And then lastly, OCH's input, I want something in writing, whether good or bad, I wanna know what OCH thinks about this. I know it's been listed. And lastly, two things. Also, sometimes we get our fire trucks and ambulances marked, and that's just an individual point, this is a college town, we like to put our, our logo on things, see if that's an additional service. Sometimes companies will do that, and they'll mark their, their equipment, you know, with our town logo or something. MSU, we've got a lot of fire trucks that are unique to the state, I would say that with you. So just something, just remember that. And then the last thing is Director Campanella's here. Is there anything that you wanna say publicly, Kristen? I mean, is there anything that we're missing here that, from an EMS dispatch standpoint, that's really sticking out as a red flag, or is there anything that you wanna say? Come up if you want to.
So we can hear you, Kristen.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanna hear, we talked about the dispatch overload from a call volume standpoint, is there anything that you're really back there, that just, I mean, is sticking out, or?
Well, actually, it's call volume, they keep anyway, is actually probably a little bit more. I pulled calls for OCH, and their estimates were around thirty-five hundred. Excuse me, now that's just, the one he's got is not wrong. That's where we send fire and OCH. So my numbers for thirty-five hundred is just for OCH calls, and that's for the entire county. So the numbers, I think, could be a little bit more. I do see a benefit, I mean, as additional resources. As EMA director, one of my things is to make sure communities prepared for disasters. And fear of mine is if we have something major here, we're not gonna have the response to deal with it, as far as ambulances. Sometimes, so, like she discussed, the ambulance is out on transfers and doing other things. So I mean, I see it as a benefit. I do still have a few questions for them, and I hope to get briefly, but I have a few more questions.
Okay.
It's more like our role in dispatching.
Okay.
One of the things that we had talked about on our break meetings is that they have EMD, which means they're, they can give pre-certification, pre-arrival instructions to people that are, that are calling in and that one one. And if they want to continue to do that, we will allow them, we, we have no qualms with that. The nice thing is, she said, but sometimes... The nice thing is, she said, sometimes in these call volumes, they have, they get overwhelmed because they have limited resources. It'd be one push of a button, and it would come to us, and we have EMDs that can then answer that, and that's where that synergy would work very, very well. They can continue to do what they're doing, and if they are too busy on the telephone, some event happens, they just push a button, and when we answer it, it's going to go to an EMD dispatcher.
Okay.
Gay day, this is one of those examples.
Yes, yes, yes.
Our call volume is like four times, because I'm down on the gay day. So I can see a benefit there. My concern is, like she said, we do EMD, and what that is, is just basically if we get a call that they're bleeding, or, you know, we give pre-arrival instructions. So for us to stop doing that, that's where I have a little issue, but I think we can work that out. Because I don't want to differentiate between city and county. City call, we're not going to tell them what to do, because if they have a call, we continue doing it. So I'd rather it be one way, all the way across the board, but like he said, if it's a gay day, we're overwhelmed, we do have that option where we can transfer to their dispatch, which is our decision.
Yes, and we're building the new one in Jackson, Mississippi, right now.
All right. Thank you, thank you both. Any other questions?
I've got one more question for you.
Yes.
Have you guys ever done anything like this for a particular county? I've gone, and traveling around, you see like a little trailer or something out in a remote part of the county, and the ambulance parked next to it or something.
Yes, sir.
Where they're servicing that.
So we're really, we're really fond about having nice living quarters, I mean, you know, not cause and halls, but for our crews that are there dedicated. Now, so, for instance, we run Rankin Cat, in Mississippi, just in Mississippi, Rankin County, Madison County, we run Washington County, Bolivar, Oklahoma, Tunica, Yazoo. And so some of these rural areas where you may have, there's, you may have two communities separated by a good distance, we may put a, I guess you might call it a building out there, with a place where, but it's not where they stay, I mean, it's, it has a TV, it has a bathroom, it has this, and it's a posting spot, because if this ambulance is gone, we don't want them just sitting on the side of the road in an ambulance. So we give them something to at least go in, but it's not their living quarters. So there are places, I don't envision anything like that here, but there are places in some of the more remote areas that we do do that, yes, sir.
Chief, as I told you Friday, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it's a void that could be filled by something, a provider such as this, and being on the south end of town, and if I were in need, I would be very appreciative of this on the corner of Academy and Montgomery. So I appreciate you bringing that forward. And I think it's something, first we'd really heard of it was Friday, and I don't know that tonight we need to act, I don't know what the urgency is with the chief, and that's not, not a nay vote, or anything, nothing negative against it. I think, I think just the discussion tonight's probably going to generate more calls and emails and questions and things we might discuss at the next meeting. So I think that's something.
Just to let you know, because I didn't expect anything like that, other cities, and I've told you this, that other cities that have done this hybrid system, they did exactly what I think you all should, it's kind of crazy that I'm sitting here saying this, but they bought other companies in and had a presentation and then chose from there, and I think that's appropriate, I think that's a good thing. We're not scared of competition. We'll tell you what we can do, and we won't tell you what anyone else can do. We'll tell you what we can do, and then you pick wherever you want.
Thank you.
Any other questions, anything? Okay. What I'm, what I think I'm hearing from the comments of the board is that there's a possibility of taking up the EMS district but not the contract. Is there any interest in taking up the EMS district? And Chris is shaking his head no.
Well, I just want to make sure the board knows what they would be voting on tonight. It is a resolution of intent, I do believe it's non-binding, but it has numerous industry-specific regulations in it. And I wanted to ask the chief, I've looked at all the state statutes that are cited in it, and the resolution does check out in the state statutes. Chief, there's numerous rules and regulations under the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, BEMS. Have you vetted those and made sure that you're comfortable with all those rules and regulations cited in the resolution?
Right, I spoke again.
Okay. Because the resolution attests that the city acknowledges all applicable statutes and regulations. The other thing that the board needs to be aware of is that if a district is established, that triggers the board appointing someone to run the administrative aspect of the district under Section 415955 of Mississippi Code.
And that, Chief, was the person you were talking about in your PowerPoint, of being in, yeah.
So with that knowledge, the board has discretion to take it up or down.
Okay. I'll, 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 I'll,